Good morning, everyone. It is April the 12th, 2022. Time is 9:32. Let's go ahead and start the meeting this morning. Erica, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Odericio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Okay, let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve. The agenda.
Followed.
Second.
Motion passes 4-0 with one absent. All right, good morning, everyone. So we'd like to start with this morning with the proclamation recognizing Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, which is April 10 through the 16th. Would Beth Torgensen and Angela Williams please join us at the podium? And then Commissioner Tedesco, would you like to read it into the?
Absolutely. First off, I just want to say thank you all for being here. This is the safest way for me to associate myself with the Riverdale Animal Shelter. Every time I seem to go there, I seem to end up coming home with another one.
Or two.
So the last, yeah, the last time I came home with two. So I just want to say, you know, for my family, those animals have made such a huge difference in our family. Just the love, the, you know, attention, the just mental relaxation that they give us at times has just been amazing. And the care that they receive while being in the shelter has been amazing. The shelter is, has, for a long time, had been neglected. And we had the opportunity and the privilege of standing up a new animal shelter, this board and many others that were involved in standing up a new animal shelter that is respectful to the animals, it's respectful to the families, it's respectful to the community, and it provides a high quality of re-adoption or re-entry or reunification within our community. And I just want to say to all those that are associated with the animal shelter in any way, thank you. It has benefited myself, my family, and I know many, many others, and we appreciate you being here. And with that, I just want to read the proclamation. Proclamation, Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, April 10 through the 16th, 2022. Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second week of April as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal management officers and animal services personnel for the dedicated service they provide to the citizens, public safety, and public service agencies and departments across the nation. And whereas every day, animal management officers put themselves in potentially dangerous situations to protect the health and welfare of all kinds of animals and the public. And whereas Riverdale Animal Shelter personnel provide humane sheltering, daily care, spay and neutering services, and critical medical care for animals in need, as well as essential community services such as adoptions, lost and found vaccination, and microchip clinics, outreach, and humane education. And whereas the Adams County Board of County Commissioners recognizes and commends the animal management and Riverdale Animal Shelter personnel for the many dedicated and long hours of service in serving this community and for fulfilling the county's commitment to provide the highest and most effective level of customer service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Adams County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaims April 10 through 16th, 2022 as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week and encourages all citizens, public safety, health, and public service personnel to join us in expressing sincere thanks and appreciation for the many long hours of outstanding service these individuals provide throughout the year to assure the safety and welfare of all. Signed by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. Beth, our Neighborhood Services Manager, with community safety and well-being, would you like to provide a few remarks?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the recognition of the animal management team and the Riverdale Animal Shelter staff. The animal management team is a small but mighty team who work diligently every day for the prevention, education, safety, and welfare of the animals and citizens in Adams County. They provide standby services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In 2021, they serviced 4,378 calls and assist many other agencies when needed. They collaborate closely with the Riverdale Animal Shelter, and our team thanks them as well for the dedication and support they provide to the animals, citizens, and our team. Thank you, team, for your hard work. I greatly appreciate your efforts, and thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you so much. And Angel, would you like to provide a few remarks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the, for supporting the proclamation for the acknowledgement of Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. Riverdale Animal Shelter is truly grateful for our partnership and collaboration with our unincorporated Adams County management officers, as well as eight other surrounding jurisdictions, so, to help and support the care for the vulnerable animals in our community. As stated in the proclamation, our team provides care for animals 365 days a year, which includes holidays and snow closures. Last year, Riverdale Animal Team provided shelter and safe care for over 6,500 animals. Over 3,000 animals were spayed and neutered, 7,100 animals were vaccinated in our shelter and through our low-cost spay-neuter, our low-cost vaccination clinics, supporting the health and safety of the animals in our community. Over 3,000 animals found their forever homes last year through our adoption services, and nearly 1,800 lost pets reunited with their families. It is an honor to serve alongside such mission-driven, hard-working, and compassionate individuals. Thank you for this opportunity to share just some of the amazing work our mutual teams are doing each and every day to support Adams County residents.
Thank you so much, Angel. Thank you for all of your work. Are there any Commissioners that would like? Commissioner Pinter?
Commissioner Tedesco beat me. Oh, thank you. I, you know, rescuing lost pets is truly an art and a service to humanity, as well as caring for animals. I have to admit, my favorite is every spring rescuing ducklings out of spring, you knew where I was going, every spring rescuing ducklings out of storm drains. But critters, large and small, are safe because of your efforts, and their families are made whole. And I know that it's hard work and it's strange hours, and the animals themselves are unruly. And I want to thank you, I want to thank you for all you do to care for these animals, to keep them safe, and then how much that love carries through to our families and community who may have a lost loved one.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. Commissioner Tedesco?
I just wanted to recognize, well, everybody from that works at either the animal shelter or in animal care or safety, could you please stand up and be recognized? I would be remiss if I didn't point out Stephanie is in the audience. So, thank you, Stephanie, for all your hard work.
Commissioner Henry?
So I don't know too many of you in the audience realize that Angel actually teaches kittens to give high fives.
She does.
We've seen it, we've witnessed it, it's amazing. Now, I could use some cat whispers in my house, so I might be contacting you guys later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. I just want to thank the entire team, both administrative and staff that work at the animal shelter. I know through COVID that you adopted animals via Zoom, so I like to tell people that that's how I met my little cat, is by Zoom, that you followed him around with, you know, your camera or your Surface or whatever it was, and we met by Zoom. I think some of the services that we see at the Riverdale Animal Shelter that we don't see in other jurisdictions and/or facilities is that there's a place for bereavement. I mean, you talk about all of the happy times of adopting a pet and the excitement of adopting a pet, a puppy or a kitten for your loved ones to be part of your family, and we don't talk about the end of life when it comes to animals. And I just want to share with the audience and those that are watching is that there's a whole area dedicated that at the end of life for your pet and your family, that there's a separate entrance for you where you can be with your pet. And I think that that's so critical, you know, in the circle of life of things, it's always easy to talk about the celebrations and very difficult to talk about the hard times. So thank you for that. The other thing that the animal shelter provides is placement for animals in times of crisis for families, and I think that we saw that. And you probably could speak more directly to specifically what it is, but if we need pets placed, if you're displaced as a resident of the county, we know, and I think we've seen in national emergencies that people will not, even in local emergencies and regional emergencies and the fires, is that people don't want to leave their homes without knowing where their pet's going to be. And we've opened the Riverdale Animals, not only the animal shelter, but we've opened the Riverdale Regional Park, also known as the Fairgrounds, for like the fire victims, where we had horses and livestock come and stay and shelter while residents across Colorado were having a crisis. And I just want to thank everything that you do, and the facility is amazing. And as residents, if you haven't seen it, even if you're not in, even if you're not looking to adopt a pet, I would strongly, strongly encourage you to go see this facility. It is amazing. So thank you so much.
But if you touch it, you take it home.
It's true. I can testify that we have also gone to visit animals and come home with them, so be warned.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay, next item on our agenda, one of our favorites is, our next presentation is the Team of the Season and Employee of the Season Awards. So we are excited again to recognize the winners of the county's Employee and Team of the Season Awards, this time for the winter of 2022 season. These employees have all gone above and beyond to demonstrate outstanding service and dedication to the county and its residents. We will first announce the Team of the Season winner, followed by the Employee of the Season category winners, and finish with introducing the overall Employee of the Season winner. The winners and their supervisors are here with us this morning, and will have a chance to speak after we read their nominations. Commissioner Henry?
Thank you. We begin with our Team of the Seasons Award, and we're joined this morning by Nancy Duncan, Budget and Finance Director, along with, hopefully she'll tell us what the acronyms mean, TAMS, and UKG Implementation Team. You guys could come on down. My favorite department, my favorite topic. The Team of the Season Award recognizes project teams and work groups that have successfully collaborated outside of their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacts the workplace or the Adams County community. Nancy nominated this team, which consists of Crystal Stout, Jerry Hicks, Ross Kimball, Nick, hopefully I say this right, Ingmar Ier, Ingmar, is that right? Okay, Lori Arliano, Mark Osborne, Crystal, Crystal Hoffner, Shannon Dennington, Debbie Haynes, and Terry Lott, Nancy Duncan, Julie Swier, Michelle Espinoza, Craig Weagle, Brian Durth, Cindy Barrow, Pam Wildman, Rosetta Gallardo, Katie Scotto, Nicole Delago, Brandon Archer, Andy Kohler, and Tom Labas. By writing, this team was pulled together in August 2020 to begin working on the implementing of the new time entry system called UKG Dimensions. With several different departments coming together to pull off this incredible project, implementing this system, as well as bi-weekly payroll, was monumental task. And what I will always take away from this project was the positivity radiating from this team. This is absolutely the most positive team I've ever been associated with. With the rollout of a new system, there are bound to be naysayers and negative feedback. Each time this happened, the team met the issues head-on and did not falter, always moving forward with positivity. This was a project that had been talked about for some time. With this team, we were able to get this accomplished. Nancy. And anyone else from the team, obviously, you brought someone up, like to say a few words?
Yeah, I want to introduce Crystal Stout. She was the project manager of this implementation. I want to let you all know that what I said about the positivity piece was absolutely right on the money. I truly have never worked with such a positive team. There was laughter in the meetings, which, by the way, were every day, twice a day, and no exaggeration, even during COVID. We were on Zoom, Crystal, more than anybody, but that team met every day, twice a day. Also, while still doing their core responsibilities of their regular job, it was an interdepartmental endeavor. No one said no. Everybody that came together always came with a yes, or they would figure it out. Just as an FYI, there are over 275 schedules that we have here at Adams County. Every single schedule had to be vetted and implemented, and that was a huge task. On top of doing all of that, we went ahead and did pay-in arrears, moving to bi-weekly pay, which had been something we had talked about since I have been here. I've been here almost eight years, and it had always been something on our schedule, but we were never able to get it quite over the finish line. I, I think the reason we weren't able to do that at that time was because we didn't have the right people. This time, we had the right people, and we were able to get it all the way done. And so I just want to let Crystal say a couple of things, and then we really appreciate this honor. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nancy. And so I just want to thank you so much for recognizing this team. I couldn't be prouder of them. I think back over the last year and the amount of hours that we spent on the phone and talking with each and every department and, you know, the configuration in the system and the endless team calls and weekends and holidays that, and everyone just stepped up. Everyone was completely invested, and I just couldn't be more proud of them and appreciate the recognition. And for Nancy, we would like to, I would like to say thank you specifically to you. This is something that we set out to do eight years ago, and of course, all of the trials and tribulations and the numerous hurdles that, you know, it, we'd have to go through, it was just very daunting. And Nancy made it happen for us. She was able to assemble the team, and the executive leadership staff was able to get together and make decisions quickly, so we were able to implement the system in record time. So just want to
Thank you.
recognize that. Thank you.
So I'm going to hand this over to Crystal. It's her team.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm asking our team to stand up too.
The TAMS?
Could the UKG team please stand up too?
Yes, team.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Nancy.
I never did get the answer of what TAMS and UKG stand for. Anybody know?
Time and Attendance Management System is TAMS, and UKG is the actual software.
Okay, good to know.
But it has merged with UKG, so we've
It's better than EKG, just saying. The TAMS and UKG Implementation Team has received a certificate of recognition, a crystal trophy in honor of their teamwork. Congratulations to this team for an incredible, it really is an incredible accomplishment. Now, we will introduce our Employee of the Season winners, Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you very much. The first Employee of the Season Award today is for the Bright Idea Creativity category, which recognizes an individual who develops innovative solutions to business challenges, breaks down boundaries, creates new relationships to improve how work gets done, and approaches problems as an opportunity for growth. We have Katie McDougall, Director of Human Services, here along with Veronica Cortez-Mendez. Veronica was nominated by Monique Espinoza, who wrote, "I honestly have a hard time choosing a category for Veronica. She is bright, creative, makes things happen, and always puts in extra effort. In the winter, she takes charge of the North Pole event we have done the past three years for low-income families. This year, she took the lead again, and we merged the event to include kinship and foster care families as well." She made sure we also collaborated with the Sheriff's Office for the first time this year. This was our biggest year yet, from the number of families served to decoration, coordination, time, and services provided. While working on this, she was also planning our department holiday party for about 800 team members and doing her everyday duties, whether it is a supervisor, management retreat, a business meeting, or a department meeting. Veronica always makes sure it becomes better than expected and better than the last. I am so lucky to work so closely with her and appreciate her dedication to our team, Adams County families and children and their tireless efforts. Katie and Veronica, it's now your show.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for recognizing Veronica. I often speak to individuals and brag about how wonderful Veronica is and say that she is the glue that holds our department together. That certainly is an understatement. She, she works tirelessly throughout each day to make sure employees are well cared for, and also make sure that we're able to do things such as the North Pole event. And some of the kids, it was really magical, what she did. And some of the kids really commented on how they felt so excited to be able to, to participate in that event, and many parents also commented how they felt like it wasn't a human services department, that they were just coming to enjoy the holidays with their family. So thank you for taking the time to recognize Veronica. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to say thank you to Katie, thank you to my team, because without their support, I wouldn't be able to do what I do at Human Services. And yeah, just thank you to my team, that's, and everybody that helped for this event as well.
Thank you.
I just have to chime in on Katie and Veronica. You know, my, my family had opportunity to volunteer and help out with the North Pole. It's, it's really, it's really magical. And if you guys find yourselves at the end of the year with extra money in your budget, supporting those families will warm your heart and really fill the holiday season. So highly recommend. We have so many great people to honor today. We will next present the Extra Effort category. So we have Marcelo Pretosté, did I do that correctly? Marcelo, if you want to come down. And Amir Fakar, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, with us now. So please come on down. You guys sat way, way in the back. This particular award celebrates an employee whose unique level of service fosters good business relationships and enhances the county's positive reputation. Marcelo received this nomination from the North Pecos Motor Vehicles Team. Marcelo goes above and beyond every day with amazingly positive and joyful attitude, no matter how odd the job, and there have been some strange ones, so we'll be curious if you share any. He immediately takes charge and gets it done. We recently had some renovations done, and all the cash drawers were placed, so the clerks were able to sit at the computer without discomfort. Marcelo immediately got his tools and crawled on the floor, moved every single one while the clerks were working with the public. That's a lot of trust. Working quickly while he, while it was convenient for each clerk. Another example, one day at the end of his shift, an unpleasant odor was coming from the main entrance to the motor vehicle. We called him, and within a few moments, he was washing down the front of the building and the sidewalks, even dragged the mats outside and washed them as well. Last but not So Amir and Marcelo, would either of you like to share comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. I brought Howard, his supervisor, to share direct comments for our fabulous employee.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking your time this morning to recognize Marcelo with this award. In his years with Adams County, he has continued to be outstanding employee. He tirelessly works on any and every project presented to him. He recognizes challenges that the staffs and operations in the facility he works in have, addresses them. He has never asked for any recognition, and that's why I am so glad that some of his customers have recognized what he's put into being the employee he is. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for honoring me with this award and for the personal DMV. I came to this country several years ago with $50 in my pocket and no English at all. Today, I'm proud to say that I'm a citizen, and I love this country. I'm very honored to pledge allegiance to the flag in every ceremony has. It's a wonderful country, and I'll never let anybody tell me otherwise. I thank Mr. Howard for hiring me about five years ago and giving me the opportunity to be a member of his team. I would also like to take the opportunity to honor my coworkers that sit in the back. Mr., please stand up, they're very shy. Please stand. Mr. Patrick, Mr. Greg, Mr. Doug, Mr. Omo, and Mr. Matt Senior over there with my family, my wife and my son. Thank you very much for the honor, and thank you for allowing me in this country.
For this award, we welcome Stacy Stevens and Katie McDougall, Director of Human Services. The Unsung Hero category honors individuals for performing high-quality, reliable, and critical work that, if not completed, would compromise operations. This person's function is behind the scenes. They are willing to improve work situations and do so without fanfare or being prompted. Stacy was nominated by Heather Drake. Heather Drake wrote, quote, "A little over a year ago, Stacy was given the task of improving audit readiness in the ongoing section and was asked to help ensure cases were transferred more effectively from intake to ongoing. With her expertise with audit requirements, she knew exactly what needed to be done and has assisted the ongoing caseworkers in ensuring these requirements were met. Additionally, she has greatly improved the transfer process between intake and ongoing as well as the ongoing to permanency. Processes that were once ineffective are now operating like well-oiled machines. Her colleagues have said her assistance has been invaluable, and they are so thankful that she is willing to take on this role. Thank you, Stacy, for all you do behind the scenes." Do you guys have a few words?
Yes, thanks again, Commissioners, for recognizing Stacy. Our work is hard every day, so what you hear in the nomination that Heather wrote is that Stacy's made the work a little bit easier for her colleagues. So I'm really proud of you, and I appreciate all of your hard work. And Heather, did you want to say?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to recognize Stacy. Innovation is not easy. We had a vague notion of what we wanted this to look like. Stacy was willing to do it and was very patient along the way until we figured it out, because, I mean, innovation doesn't usually go smoothly. There's bumps. We have to be patient and figure out how to manage those, and with Stacy's help, we were able to do that.
Stacy's not thrilled to be in front of a bunch of people.
I guess thanks to Heather and the team I'm part of right now. I've been actually an ongoing caseworker for 20 years. I recently took this position just for a break from ongoing as an ongoing caseworker with working with families, and hopefully what I do helps my team members, both on my current team and the rest of the ongoing unit plus the adoptions unit, so we can get those cadences adopted as soon as possible as well. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, our next category is Making It Happen, and we welcome back to the podium Katie McDougall, Director of Human Services, and Rhonda Bergen, Children and Family Services Ongoing Supervisor. Katie and Rhonda are accepting this award on behalf of Cynthia Thomas, who is unable to be with us today. The Making It Happen category honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity such as lack of resources and unexpected challenges. Rhonda nominated Cynthia by writing, "Cynthia covered a hearing for one of her coworkers who had the day off. During the hearing, the court decided the child needed to be removed from their parents and placed with a grandparent. This decision was unexpected and meant Cynthia would have to arrange for the child to get to the grandparents' home and go to the office to get the appropriate paperwork for the placement. While doing a walkthrough for safety at the home, she discovered concerning information regarding two of the adults who lived in the home. She was in consistent contact with her supervisor and the guardian, and it was decided to complete a safety plan with the family to ensure the child would not be left alone with the two adults at any time. Then Cynthia agreed to transport the child to school the next morning and made sure transportation was arranged for the remainder of the week, which included herself by providing some of the transportation. She knew exactly what she needed to do for this child and grandparent and just did it with very little assistance. It is my honor to announce that Cynthia is more than just the winner of this category. She has also been chosen as the overall Winter Employee of the Season. As such, Cynthia is receiving $350 in cultural and action points and a trophy in addition to her certificate of recognition. Katie and Rhonda, would you like to speak on Cynthia's behalf?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for recognizing Cynthia, and she is here, which is fantastic. We didn't know if she would be able to make it, so she gets to share in this award with us this morning. I don't know somebody more deserving than Cynthia. Her passion for kids was very evident to me just as I even just started a couple of years ago and some of the conversations that we've had in the hallways. So thank you so much for taking the time to recognize Cynthia and her hard work. I know that this is one example of kids who are better off because of her work, and there are so many more that we could brag about and brag on Cynthia for. But Rhonda, do you want to say?
Thank you for recognizing Cynthia, and I agree with Katie. Cynthia is awesome. She works well with the parents and the kids. She's also my lead worker, which makes my job a lot easier. So, but yeah, I'm just so excited for Cynthia and so very proud of her, and I was glad she could come today.
Welcome, Cynthia. We're so happy that you're here to join us today.
Good morning. I would like to say thank you, and I'm very humbled to receive this award. Thank you.
Cynthia, Cynthia, don't go anywhere. We're going to be taking pictures. Hate to have you make it all the way up there to come right back down. Just saying. Our Employees of the Season category award winners are all receiving 5,000 cultural and action points and a certificate of recognition. To all our winners, thank you for your service to Adams County community. We would also like to thank all employees joining us today, both in person and by watching the live stream on YouTube, in support of your colleagues, as they are honored for their great work. We also encourage you to nominate deserving coworkers. The Spring Employee and Team of the Season nomination is currently open, so please use my Adams for more information on how you can nominate deserving coworkers and teams. Now, we'll present the awards and take photo, a group photo with the winners. To all the winners today, please meet with your photographer outside the public hearing room immediately following the group photo to get individual photos. Group photo's down here, so all of you want to come on down, Commissioners. Okay, if we can have everybody squeeze in just a little bit more. Is that good?
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, we'll do a count on three. One, two, three.
Do one more.
One, two, three. Good. All right. All right.
All right, next item on our agenda is Public Comment. Erica, did we have anyone sign up for Public Comment this morning?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any remarks? Doesn't look like it. Elected Officials Communication. Commissioners? No. All right, then I just need a motion for the Consent Calendar.
I move to approve our Consent Calendar.
Second. Motion passes five to zero. Next item is County Manager Alicia Reese.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to thank you all, first of all, for recognizing all of our employees for Employee of the Season this time. This is always my very favorite time at public hearing, is recognizing those wonderful examples of service, so thanks so much for that. Our first item today is a resolution authorizing the first supplemental appropriations to the 2022 Adams County Government Budget, and our Deputy Budget Director, Mark Osborne, will present this item.
Looks like we cleared out about half the room with budget item. So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Osborne, Deputy Budget Director for Adams County. Before you is a proposed resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the 2022 Adams County Budget. The Budget Amendment was discussed in Public Studies Session on Tuesday, April 5, 2022. In accordance with state statute, and so residents have the opportunity for public comment and input, notice of this public hearing was published in the North Glen Thornton Sentinel on April 7, 2022. The proposed resolution is authorizing total budget appropriations in the amount of $83,475,413, broken out as follows. In the General Fund, $65,663,555. In the Capital Facilities Fund, $13,229,638. Road and Bridge Fund, $1,446,301. Open Space Projects Fund, $1,395,667. Fleet Management Fund, $883,599. Flat Rock Facility Fund, $150,000. And Colorado Air and Spaceport Fund, $706,653. Can I answer any questions for you on this first Budget Amendment for carryovers?
Thank you, Mark. Questions from the Board? I'm not seeing any, so I just need a motion from one of the Commissioners.
Move to, oh.
Go ahead. You already pushed the button. Your name's there.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alicia?
Next, we have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Family Tree, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $372,231 for child-only case management services. And we have Meg Pickens to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here today requesting to award Family Tree the child-only contract from RFP 2022 603. Family Tree provides a high-quality, short-term case management services through a program called Tan of Staple Families for Adams County residents receiving child-only tan of basic cash assistance. Services are in accordance with the standards of Adams County and the state of Colorado, including the timely provision of family stabilizing resources, supportive services, evaluation of family stability and safety of children, identification of additional family needs to stabilize the children in their home or in the home of a relative, and assist with custody or adoption when appropriate and connection with community resources. Family Tree has provided the Stable Families Program for 19 years, and they continue to innovate. They have created a legal clinic for tan of child-only families and a support group for caretakers called the Circle of Parents. The program anticipates serving up to 360 families this year, and this contract year will run April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $372,231. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, then I just need a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Alicia?
Next, we have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Velatini Corporation, doing business as Royal Electric Company, in the amount of $4,491,844 for the Taxway A, B, C, and E Lighting Construction and Taxway C Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Our Director of the Colorado Air and Spaceport, Jeff Klosko, will present.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. A pleasure to see you all this morning. So this is the next step in the process to select the contractor for the FAA-funded Taxway project that will install Taxway lighting and rehab Taxway Charlie pavement at the Colorado Air and Spaceport.
Questions from the Board? Not seeing any.
Madam Chair, we discussed this during our study session and walked through all of these things, so I feel we have enough information. I move to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next is a resolution approving the use of state-awarded agreements in the not-to-exceed amount of $320,000 for the purchase of computers to fulfill the county's computer replacement schedule. Director of ITI, Kevin Beach, will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is our annual replacement of computers. We replace computers every four years, so this is our annual allotment. Any questions?
Questions from the Board? Quiet group this morning. Thanks, Kevin.
Actually, I, does that mean I need to change like my personal computer, because it's like eight years old? Just thought I'd ask.
I would recommend it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll do that as soon as I get enough money to do it. I'll do that as soon as I get enough money to do it.
Second.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Next is a resolution approving a purchase order between Adams County and Insight Public Sector, Inc. in the amount of $920,033.71 for the annual Microsoft Office 365 licenses and support. And Kevin, once again.
This one's a little bit more expensive. So we sign a three-year contract with Microsoft. This is for the first of those three years. So we did go out and get solicit quotes, and Insight was the winning bidder, and this covers everything from the desktops to the server room to My Adams and pretty much everything Microsoft in this community. Any questions?
So you're saying if we buy the computers, we should also buy software to put on them?
Recommended.
Okay. I move to approve.
That's harsh. Second.
Fine. Motion passes five zero.
Right, next, we have a resolution designating pre-qualified contractors for roofing contractors for multiple Adams County projects, and Facilities Operations Manager Eric Bryant will present.
Man, mine's going to be really long compared to those last ones. So, good morning, Commissioners. Eric Bryant, Facility Operations Manager. With the number of county roofing projects budgeted in 2022 and the effects the pandemic has had and will continue to have on the project timelines, contractor staffing, and availability of materials, all budgeted roofing projects will be sent to contractors on the statement of qualifications. This will allow the county to expedite budgeted projects more efficiently and ensure quality construction. The SOQ included anticipated 2022 roofing projects and any other similar roofing projects determined by Adams County to be solicited. Budgeted projects for 2023 and 2024 will also be sent to the qualifying contractors. An SOQ was advertised through BidNet, and 11 contractors responded. After a thorough review of the evaluation committee, eight out of the 11 contractors have been accepted and recommended as pre-qualified for contracting services for the roofing projects. The list is Black Roofing, Colorado Moisture Control, CRW, Flynn, Front Range Roofing Systems, Superior Roofing Incorporated, Tech to America, and United Materials. Facility Operations recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioners approves the pre-qualified contractors for roofing projects budgeted as required by the Adams County Facility and Fleet Management Department. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Commissioner Tedesco.
Yeah, I have a question about the prequalifications, because we only allot on an annual basis for a lot of these awards. The prequalification, will there still be a competitive bid for the prequalifications? Or will you determine who gets the job based on who's available and other factors?
What we do is we send out the bids to this list of eight, and then if you want to bid on it, they can, and then we go off their bids. So if only four of them bid, then we'll review those four bids.
But they're still that competitive?
Still competitive, yes.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? So just a follow-up question on that. Is there enough competition? I understand there's different types of roof applications. Is there enough competition between the eight to obtain bids? Or are they specialized and awarded by category at the statement of qualifications?
Absolutely. A lot of these contractors specialize in a lot of different roofs, and we've used probably 90% of them in the past for similar projects. So now we just all have them in one group instead of just going out for, like, a normal RFP and having people apply. This speeds things up, for sure.
Okay. So let me ask a more clarifying question. If we put this out for bid to the eight contractors, is there the possibility that some are not going to apply, leaving maybe one only submitting a bid?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if it'd be all the way down to one.
Okay.
But when we go out, we don't expect all eight to bid.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed. Commissioner Tedesco, did you have a follow-up?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
So is there a process for others that may want to come in in future to pre-qualify? Is there a process for that?
Yeah, I forget how often we do this. I think it's going to be, like, every year, every two years, we go out for an SOQ, and then we go through and we do the same thing. We review these.
So we don't go out every year for...
I think this one is going for two years. I don't know if Jen can let me go out.
I just want to know if there's going to be an opportunity for other businesses that maybe missed their chance to bid on it, have an opportunity to put their qualifications in as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, there will be an opportunity for other companies to be a part of the SOQ in the future. This one is to cover 2022 and 2023, because the process is so long for bidding. Getting materials started and getting projects started could take six months, so we decided to do a two-year for this, and we're going to relook at it for any sort of renewals and additions to the prequalified list in a couple of years.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, if I am indeed the last one, I'll sort of ask my question that's sort of more of a comment. Just affirming that this process gets us high-quality services at a good value, and that while we want to have a speed of execution of the contracts, you all are being diligent throughout the process and over the next two years to make sure that we remain with high quality at the best value possible. I see you nodding. I'd like some verbalizing on that, just because I think that's where these questions are coming from. We support you. We support you in your determination that this is the best path forward. I'm happy to make this motion, but just some reassurance that you're going to continue to focus on those two items, quality as well as value.
Yes, we adhere to the policy set forth for prequalified vendors when we go out and solicit these services. Obviously, quality for the contractors. We also look at payment equity for the companies. We compare them to each other and not just what we assume they should be paid, pay benefits. All those things are looked at through the SOQ.
Safety records, all that jazz. Yeah. All right, so if there really isn't anything else, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we have a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the agreement between Adams County and Officapes to provide office furniture for Adams County buildings, and our interim manager of Planning, Design, and Construction, Cindy Stringham, will present this item and the next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Project Manager and interim planning, design, and construction manager, Cindy Stringham. The current contracts, and I apologize, I actually am addressing seven and eight. The current contracts with Officapes and Workplace Elements LLC provides continuity and efficiency across the county for replacing or adding furniture. Both companies have proven to offer reliable services and competitive prices over the last two years during the initial contract term, and the contracts include three one-year renewal clauses. Therefore, it is recommended to approve Amendment 1 to extend the agreements with Officapes for an additional one-year term. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Not seeing any. So I just need a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion passes five zero.
And we'll just, for the record, recognize the final item as a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the agreement between Adams County and Workplace Elements LLC, also to provide office furniture for Adams County buildings, and Cindy already reviewed that item with you.
Ditto. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
Nope. Move to approve as presented.
Second.
I just have one question before we vote. Is there a cap? No, you're good. Are we capping these at any point when it comes to office furniture? Is there a limit on the dollar amount and not-to-exceed amount?
So in this next year term, we're estimating 1.6 million for the year, but we are planning on awarding on an as-needed basis within an approved project budget.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, County Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. To my knowledge, I have no business today.
What?
I'll take it.
Exactly. Thank you, Heidi. All right. At 10:27 this morning, we are adjourned as no such other matters are on the agenda. So thank you all.